Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our February 2nd Town Board, Town of Rhinebeck meeting. This was rescheduled from the 31st when we had a small weather event. So thanks for joining us. Would everybody please stand before the podium? The Pledge Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve our January 19th, 2017 reorganizational meeting and our January 19th regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Announcements today in Kingston, at the Kingston City Hall. I attended the Hudson Riverfront Alliance, Hudson River Waterfront Alliance Group. It's an alliance of all municipalities on the river that's affected by this proposal for the Coast Guard to put a dozen berths from Yonkers to Rhinebeck. And it was well-attended. It's spearheaded by Mayor Michael Spano of Yonkers and Steve Noble, the Mayor of Kingston, hosted us. And it's a great source of information and a good organization to help us organize against this proposal. So we'll continue to work on that. We also have a letter here from Jerry Geist, who is the President of the Associations of Towns. I think I'm going to put this on our website, sort of calling attention to Governor Cuomo's continued assaults on local government. And we're being forced towards consolidation, which I'm all for, will happily do whatever we need to do to keep taxes down. But local municipalities are not the source of fiscal stress in New York. So I'm going to have this posted on our website. If everybody can read this, it's something we could do to call on the governor to help us with real tax relief, which isn't on our level. And lastly, I just wanted to make everyone aware that we... I'll save this. It's about the Amtrak search area agreement. We have a search area problem with the Amtrak station. They hadn't been paying their taxes for all their lighting and water districts. They thought they were exempt. They are not exempt from special taxes. County now owns the Amtrak station. They're trying to get title of it back so that they can do their required ADA renovations to it. As part of this, we're seeing if we can't get them to take over the steps, the maintenance and ownership of the steps to our park. So that's something I'm working on with the assessors and our search area attorney. Does anybody else have any announcements or committee and liaison reports?
Yeah. As the board may recollect, we brought a lawsuit against the state of New York about three, four years ago to get reimbursement for attorney's fees that were spent in defending successfully two lawsuits challenging our zoning law adopted in 2009. We retained an attorney who was working on a contingency, so it's not costing us anything unless we're successful. Suit was brought probably two and a half years ago against the state in the Court of Claims, where you have to sue the state. And the Attorney General's Office representing the state moved to dismiss. The Court of Claims judge agreed with the Attorney General and dismissed the lawsuit. We appealed that to the Second Department in Brooklyn where our state deals go. It was argued in October 2015. And about a week ago, we got a favorable decision reversing the dismissal. So we are now going to be back in front of the Court of Claims. And we'll talk to the Attorney General's Office, see if they're willing to do something. If not, we'll move for summary judgment and see how it comes out.
Do you mean that we're going to talk to the AG about a settlement until we get a settlement, before getting summary judgment? Will they cover our attorney's fees for the lawsuit we had to bring against them to recover the legal fees? Now, so this is great news. We'll be reimbursed for our lawsuits regarding our comprehensive plan. Can we also expect them to cover the, excuse me, costs of pending litigation with Red Wing over our...
I have absolutely no idea as to whether or not they would see it that way. I think it's something that we ought to think about and analyze what the proper steps would be, but at least put us in a position where we can argue that.
One would think that since this is for our comprehensive plan...
The law with respect to reimbursement for attorney's fees sunset at the end of 2017. I've already spoken to Assemblyman Cahill's office about extending it. He has with Sue Serena, the jointly sponsored legislation to extend that deadline.
But we're at the beginning of 2017.
Yes, but it has to be passed in this session of the legislature to extend it. If it doesn't get extended, you know, even if you get reimbursement, I don't know if that would include...
All right, well, it's good news. It's good news. This is a large piece of change for us. So that's, it's good, very good news.
I'm focusing on it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Open space and affordable housing was supposed to happen on the 31st, but on advice of our Highway Superintendent, we suspended our meeting because of snow.
Could we set a date for the...
Yeah, sure. Can they come to our next Town Board meeting?
It would be much better, at least for me, if we did it on the 14th, which is the next day. We could start at four and it's Valentine's Day, so we can get finished earlier.
Yeah, I'm not available. I'm in a class at Bard, so...
You're saying do it at what time, 3:00?
I could do it anytime.
Why can't we do it at the Town Board meeting?
It's a hardship on me because I'll be traveling back that day.
How long do you think it'll be in a week?
Should be a half hour, half hour presentation.
If that's what you want.
Yeah. I'm sorry, because you're traveling back and, I mean, but we have a meeting scheduled for 6:45. We don't have a lot on the agenda.
Okay, let's do it then on the 13th.
Is that all right? We could just put them on our regular agenda and...
But do you, yeah, fine. Well, could we, yeah, maybe we can do it first, so I don't have a lot of the committee hanging around. I don't know what you want to do. Do you want to go through the law page by page? Do you want to have a summary?
Well, I'm reading it. You know, I'll have it read by the time. I'd like the salient points, you know, we could, it's pretty long. What is it, 27 pages?
Yeah.
What do you guys want to do? I don't know that I need page by page.
I should read it.
You gotta read it? And we need it over here?
Yeah, I'll read it by then and then I'll read it.
Okay, then it's a one-page summary page. John has it, I think, my secretary sent up, or I'll make sure John has it. And the statute is there.
John, is it in this book?
No, it's not.
Okay.
John, can I get it cut?
Yeah, I'm not sure I have it, but when I get it on the...
Let's get it printed out and put in all of our boxes, the whole law and page summary. I mean, I think this is just an introduction for us, and then we have to talk about it and get some public input, right?
Right, well, it hasn't been introduced. We were doing the workshop before introduction, but the next step would be to introduce it.
And that would be a public hearing?
Yeah, it'd have to be a public hearing. There has to be a secret presentation.
Yeah, will you get it for us by tomorrow, by, you know, can we get it today, do you think?
Let me look at my box to see if, I thought you might have put it in. But if not, it'll be there.
Okay, I don't know if Warren can attend. If not, you know, Jonathan and Chris can take us through.
Well, Warren, you said you wanted Warren there. Warren has a Hyde Park meeting. I don't know if you want to start earlier. He has to leave so he can get to the Hyde Park meeting. Why don't we start earlier?
Can you make it early?
I can make it earlier.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we start...
Six?
Six, five, whatever you want.
Let's talk to Warren and make sure, like, if he could be there at 5:30, take us through it, and then we can continue our meeting. That would be great.
Good.
There we go.
We can get there at a reasonable hour. Good.
John, you just need to check with Aunt Warren and then notice the meeting for earlier. Thank you. All right, moving on. Anybody else? Oh, well, okay, I guess that's it. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-039, Preliminary Accounts Payable Abstracts, Vouchers 17 through 159, 18 checks totaling $33,575.68. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-040, our Preliminary Accounts Payable Abstracts, 39 checks totaling $31,690.4. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for 2017-041, our jurisdictional annex to Dutchess County's Hazard Mitigation Plan. May I have a second? So about two and a half years ago, then Highway Superintendent Kathy Consella and I participated in a county plan. The county hired Tetra Tech, a company, to help us put all this information together. And the information was to prepare a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for every municipality in Dutchess County. Kathy and I worked with Henry Campbell, our Coordinator for Emergency Services. We worked with Sergeant Pete Dunn of our Village Police Force. We worked with the Village Code Enforcement Officer, the Town Code Enforcement Officer, and then Barry took over. And Joe Lenny also did a lot of work on it. And what we did was follow the program that the county and Tetra put together to look at all incidences we've had of emergencies, to look at where we're weak, to look at what insurance claims we've had. And, you know, we don't have a lot of issues here. Our biggest issues here are summer storms and winter storms. You know, we have a small, we get a little bit of teeny earthquakes that almost we never notice, but the biggest emergencies we have here are from summer and winter storms. So we mapped all of this out and did a lot of information. It's all here in the study, and what we're asking you tonight is to vote on accepting this, and the county has asked us to do it. So this is a great example of how the county sort of prepared a joint, a consolidation of services that everybody participated in. And it helps us with our FEMA insurance and all of our other general liability insurance.
Just a five-year study?
No. I mean, we looked back about five years. I think, because, yes, it was a five-year study, but it didn't take us five years. That's what I thought.
Are you going to advise it before?
As the county asks us to do it, we will. We can certainly look at it. It's not something that I think we could do on our own, and we needed this Tetra to really organize it for us. So I think we'll put this on our website, John, Hazard Mitigation Plan, and people can certainly look at it. Gives us our municipal profile, looks at all of our growth and development trends. It has a history of our natural hazard events. It looks at where we're weak, where we're strong, and we're in pretty good shape here. Certainly called attention to some culvert flooding issues, but we're lucky. We're in good shape here in Rhinebeck. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-042, Town Hall Use Application from Center Claus. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
So Center Claus, again, next year, December 2nd and 3rd, from 8 to 6. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We'll look forward to having them again next year. Resolution 2017-043, our 217 maintenance contracts. May I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion.
Second.
Joe? These are pro forma maintenance contracts. It's for Vanguard, our roof maintenance, ABC Pest Control, ESC Pool Chemicals, our Protective Power Generator, Decker, Jeff Decker for the dock project, our Mid Hudson for the Rhine Cliff sprinkler system, Superior Sanitation for portable toilets, MNO, Harisectic Tank Pumpouts, and Costco Parco Furnace and Propane Service. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, we're taking a little bid on...
Yes, we absolutely followed our bidding protocol. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-044, Contract with the Chason Companies for our landfill reporting and sampling. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
I'll second it. And Joe, I think you talked to them and got the cost down even a little bit.
Yeah, the budget here in the U.S., we need to speak to Chason.
Thank you.
And they have to apply to the state to cut back on some of the inspections as unnecessary at this point.
Also, I don't know, I'll just throw this out there. Mara Ranville is a former head of the Bard Center for Environmental Policy. She has her PhD in water chemistry. She's an expert on water. She contacted us to let us know if, to see if we would be interested in her services for this. I don't know if it's too late. This is certainly something we can consider for next year. If you guys want to hold up on this, we can talk tomorrow. I believe she can do all of the testing. I'd want someone to look into it to see if she could, if she could work with a lab. I don't know what you guys want to do. I just put that out there.
I would let Chason continue this year because they have to apply for these waivers. And then we can talk to her sometime in the spring and see if she's capable. I assume you'd need some kind of a license for it, for the state to accept the report. I don't know what it is.
Okay, so we will, we will have her contact, I'll ask her to contact you if you want to take it on, or anybody else does, see if it's feasible and if there's any kind of savings there. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-045, Recreational Department Hires for 2017. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
This is from Elaine.
I guess we're just going as we, she's tiring people as she goes. Okay, any further...
And this is basically the rates from last year.
Okay. What is the stipend for, for the Aquatic Director?
Oh, it's because we need a first responder, and that stipend was given last, last year to Alice, who's a licensed practical nurse. We need somebody that's got the right certifications, and Joshua Martin does, and so he'll get the stipend this time. But it's, I'm sorry.
So it's a $1,500 stipend, and does that seem like a lot of money? Is it, how long is the stipend for?
The whole camp session.
So it's six months?
No, six weeks, or seven.
I'm sorry, six, seven weeks. So...
Yeah, it's like $200 a week. My recollection, however, was that it was 500, not 50.
That's what I, that's what I thought, it was 500. This seems really high.
Where'd you get the figure from?
Huh?
Where'd the figure come from?
I don't know. Elaine?
I think it's incorrect.
I tell you what, why don't we, why don't I move to change it to 5?
It's six weeks for camp or seven weeks?
Well, it was seven weeks later.
Okay, so here's the thing. This is, we're paid, this is somebody who makes $480 a week. We're basically giving him and doubling his salary. I don't think we paid this much.
Why don't we just table it the next meeting, the 13th?
All right, let's do that.
Do you mind?
No.
Okay, and I think that's a lot to pay for first responders, so...
Yeah, Elaine will be back after the next...
Two weeks.
Yeah, and after the next meeting.
Cable? Okay, thank you.
Can we find the res, I think I might have the resolution.
Well, Shelley would know when we're paying, I think.
I might have it right here. Well, we continue, and we can table this, and maybe by the time we get to the end of the meeting, we'll find what we did last year.
Okay, or, you know, or we have, I mean, it's a BEMIware. We can prove this is BEMIware.
Yeah, it's $500. One of, so, it's $500 last year.
That's what I thought. All right, let's...
I move to amend this, change it to $500.
I'll second the amendment. So we are not tabling this. We have, we have this on the floor to approve the Recreation Department hires, Aquatic Director and First Responder, $12 an hour with a $500 stipend, and a Camp Counselor at $9 an hour. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Great, thanks. Yeah, I thought it was... Resolution 2017-046, changing the Head of Maintenance Department from Town Supervisor to the Town Highway Superintendent. I'll make a motion. May I have a second? So this is part of moving the supervision of our Maintenance Department to the Highway Department under our working foreman and our Highway Superintendent. And I know that we're working with the union. We don't need the union's permission. They may want to negotiate additional terms for the people who are supervising, but it's our prerogative to change the structure. So is there any discussion?
Yes, I just want to hear about the title.
I have to call Civil Service about that.
I could.
Yes, you didn't speak to the right person. Gina Cristiani's been gone for like two years. Heidi was, then took over. She's gone. There's an interim director. That's who I spoke with. I don't know the person you spoke with. Our Maintenance Supervisor is no longer a supervisor. We may have to change the title because he's being supervised by someone. If we don't have to, we don't have to. If we have to, it's not our call. It's Civil Service. So I'll follow up and whatever.
I think, Alan, you sent the memo with the name of the person that you spoke to.
Yes, he's not the acting director.
But why don't we start...
I talked to the acting director.
Yeah, what he said was if the job, the job description doesn't change, the title doesn't matter.
It does, because he's no longer supervising. He's not supervising any other, he won't be supervising our, our full-time seasonal workers, and he's being supervised. We may have to change it. If we don't, we don't. If we do, we will.
Is this going to bother the director?
We'll talk to, we'll talk to him about it. It's certainly, you know, it's Civil Service. It's beyond our, that's beyond our pay grade. That's the county.
Does this bother him?
It will bother him if the title changes, yes. It will bother him a great deal.
And he'll have to move on, because that's, that's the price of, of having supervision for the department. It's, you know, we don't have to, we won't. If we do, that's what we're doing.
Well, I mean, it's also a decision about whether Bob Fitzpatrick will be managing the employees doing maintenance, or whether the foreman in the Highway Department will be managing.
He will not. The foreman's managing everything.
He's going to take on everything.
Yeah, well, I don't know, well, you have to talk to him about Dan as to who you are.
We may not need that part, a full-time seasonal worker.
But assuming you do, and there may be temporary people, mowing mowers, so...
And that will be under the Highway, the supervision of the Highway Foreman. So I'll, there's nothing in here about a title change. This is, that's...
That's TBD.
Yeah, did we vote on this? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-047, new time clocks for town personnel. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Want me to explain what this is?
Sure.
Right now, we have no time clock at the cemetery. There's the time clock at the Town Hall needs to be replaced because it's unreliable. Time clock at the park is not connected to anything other than a local PC, and the time clock at the Highway Department is a different brand and uses different software than what the bookkeeper uses. What this would do is get basically four time clocks that are all, that are all compatible with one another, so that, and then network then into the Time Guardian software that the bookkeeper uses, so that everybody can access one database, so that, for instance, people could punch in at the pool, punch out at the Highway Garage, and then that information would be automatically integrated into the database. So it would save, it would save clerical time, which is not inconsiderable, by the way, and also be much more consistent. So this, this is for the costs for three additional devices that will, that will use fingerprints, either one or a whole hand.
Three or four?
I don't know. I'm going to, I'm...
We need, my understanding is we need four.
No, we have, we have one at the pool that's brand new.
And that we can bring into the system?
And we can bring it into the network.
Okay, so it's three of them.
And you're adding one to the cemetery?
We're going to add one to the cemetery. It'll be a one-finger device, which is, costs roughly $350. And then, and then the one at the Highway Garage, I'm going to, I'm going to do some research and see whether we need one finger or all fingers.
The recommendation is hands for physical, we might need hand at the cemetery as well. I got to tell you, our one finger here is not reliable.
Well, then maybe we're going to get...
We just, and we have to spend quite some time manually integrating.
Yeah, I'm going to call the company and see what they recommend.
Okay.
But in any case...
But make sure you talk to Shelley before you do.
I have, a couple times, yeah. But the idea would be Shelley can pull a report.
We can all have access to it.
I remember the gal at the Highway Garage can pull a report.
Sophie.
Sophie, and...
We can have access to it.
And we can all have access to everything. It's all consistent and integrated and all that. And then the other part of this is the money, $960 to have our IT contractor, professional computer associates do the networking configuration, so that everything networks together.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-048 for our new building department vehicle. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
We got the $25,000 grant that Joe applied for, for the shared services, for a new, actually it wasn't shared services, it was the one-time tax saving in, under the shared services for four-wheel drive and new vehicle for our building department. So that's great. And we're buying it off contract?
Yeah.
And we need an extra $600 or $700 to purchase it?
Yes.
Great. Any further discussion? Have we picked it out yet?
Yeah, it's this thing that's attached to the thing, the specifications.
I just have one, one comment when we get it, and we have the town logo put on. I'd like that approved by the Town Board. We have about four different logos on all of our trucks, and since I have a branding background, I think we need one seal, one font, one town logo. So I just bring them forward. If I need to work with the county on that, we can certainly do that.
Elizabeth, if you could sign the county, county contract after our meeting, because I would like to, before I order it, I want to make sure that Molinaro signs it.
Yes.
So I have a signed contract, so I want to...
Great, so this is another good grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I guess our last resolution is... Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I guess our last resolution is 2017-049, appointing a labor attorney. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, we have met with and like James Griven of Griven-Ferlazzo in Albany and they're helping us with a labor issue now. This is a letter, engagement letter, and we can either continue to work with them on labor issues or he can finish up this one labor issue for us, but he's asked us to sign this. Any further discussion?
I guess I have a problem with the annual rate. It's more than we pay our town attorney and I do see an attorney creep in terms of rates. Also, I don't know if he's gonna charge us mileage if you have an attorney in Albany. I would like to check around. I haven't met this person.
He's, he's working for us already.
No, I understand that and, you know, we'll continue and, but at least I'd like to see if there is somebody local and a lower rate. I don't know. Did you at all speak to him about lowering his rate to, well, I guess my experience of dealing with attorneys for 40 years is you can bargain. So if, if we decide to go with him, let's see if we could at least get him down to what we pay the town attorney, which would be $175.
Or are you travel expenses?
I don't think he needs to travel, like...
Well, if he's gonna handle an arbitration, it'll be down here. And, you know, some of those can involve three different, four different sessions, which, I doubt. Also, I note that container is like the three different possible attorneys, I think, working on the matter. It's hard to believe that all of them are...
You want to table this? You want to look into it?
Yeah.
Let's table this and you'll, you'll, you'll call him up.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks for calling. I think that's it. Any new business? Any discussion items? Any public comment on any non-agenda items? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss...
Motion?
Well, aside from attorney-client, I'd like to discuss our pending union negotiations. And I think we can come back and adjourn after that. Good afternoon. Thanks for joining.